Specific issues where there's a theater and there's no parking available to that. To look at some of those general areas where they might make changes. And so, we are one, going to have a discussion overall on meters and timing. But I think if there's a specific issue that is unique to that area, that the department is willing to work with each council office on a specific area.
My friendly amendment would be that the department then work with each council office as opposed to cover with specific meters whether 503 or 504 or 555 meter zones be altered. If the council suggested the general manager work with the council offices as opposed to doing a direct motion and make a determination. On some areas that are specifically on Lake City, the difference is there's no off-street parking. So you have these plays. And on Santa Monica Boulevard adjacent to the 13th District, there's no off-street parking. So what do you do? You're making people, you know, run out of a middle of a player or a lunch. But if, uh, dinner. But if you go from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. I'm going to accept the dollar even though it's high. I'll accept the dollar. But I think we should look at other parts of the city which may not have the same typical meter rate as in the past. If the general manager, and I know Ms. Jackson was here for a moment.
She's here.
Here's Amir Sadadi.
Amir.
And I know I've got, I'll push my button again. But if we could figure this out with the mayor making some decisions, then we could move forward, have the CAO study. But I do want to alter some Sunday collections because they have, then it impacts the neighborhood.
I really think we're talking about two different things. We were here before you and the department is implementing a policy. This was a policy by the mayor and city council in its entirety. And it was part of the formula for the budget. So any changes you make, it's really up to this body as a council to make those changes. And the CAO can speak to the budget because I can, or the CLA. But those have implications. When you go change the hours or take a Sunday away, those are, you know, huge policy decisions that the department can't go in street by street and make those determinations. So when we sat before all of you and we talked about the rollout of the new meter technology, that's a small portion of the city where we're able to get the convenience of the credit cards and other forms of payment for the public. Now, the hours were also included because it helps with the turnover for the businesses in those entertainment areas where you have shops, restaurants. You know, those businesses operate on Saturdays and Sundays the same as they would do any other day. So therefore, having that meter enforced helps that turnover. Many locations, Councilmember Lavange, businesses come and complain to us because employees or other people are parking all the time. They're taking up the valuable parking spaces that should be there for their customers. And I agree with Councilmember Grul. There are locations where it needs to be looked at a little bit more specific to the use of it. And I think you and I talked, Councilmember Lavange, that the North Hollywood District is a unique district, that we're going to work with you and your staff and the stakeholders, CRA in that area to make what's a viable decision. So what our general manager is requesting is instead of us DOT working with currently 13 council members individually on this street, that street versus this hours and that hours, if it's a policy change that needs to be made, then it needs to be made in the realm of what it would mean to the budget, what it would mean to the operation of the management of the meter technology and the meter hours that we have. And that needs to be done as a whole.
District 11 Councilmember Bill Rosendahl, who is in favor of eliminating the two-hour parking restrictions at parking meters, asks about new technology and keeping communities involved.
When will we arrive at the technology date where if I want to park anywhere and I want to be there four hours or six hours or all day, will I be able to pay for that and so I don't have to move my car every two hours, which is childish, if you're willing to pay more and stay there longer?
Absolutely, that technology is possible, Councilmember. We're actually doing pilots, but we have 40,000 meters and we cannot do that without all of the testing. So we've tested that. And that's really, in my opinion, the future is really going towards a dynamic parking pricing where the demand sets the price.
Right.
And that could go up and down again based on demand.
Sure. And in that context, we go to the new technology which allows you to put it on your credit card, right? Pay by phone. So you don't run around with a pocket full of quarters. That's the big problem for all of us. All of a sudden it was a quarter. I know, I go to my barber shop. It's a quarter. Now it's a buck. So you've got to have four quarters, which is okay. I'm smart enough to be able to put four quarters in there. But beyond that, I can't. I mean, no, I can't run around with a sack full of quarters. And so as we drive the technology to the pricing, as you said, on demand and the hours go occasion, go that way, we won't have this problem. Is that what we're looking at as a solution?
That is what we're looking at, Councilmembers. So we've done a small pilot of about 15% of the technology, but there's additional steps necessary. As you know, we're in the process of doing a request for proposal for the rest of the city.
Correct.
And having that technology and the availability of having staggered hours as part of that RFP, as part of the equipment and technology and the backend system that can manage that. So you could basically have multiple layers of hours where you don't have to come back or feed the meter and you have a lot more convenience.
And what I would like to do, and I've asked you of this, and I know you've been real busy, is I want my district, the 11th District, the coastal district, with clarity as to where my meters are and what the pricing is. I then intend to take it to my eight neighborhood councils so that they can get engaged with it as well as the Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Rotary Club, as well as the homeowner groups. So the community itself is part of the process as to how we finally go through this process. So I look forward to the 11th District survey map. Also, of course, when you talk the whole city, there are districts within our city that have no meters at all. And we need to visit those issues and see where fairness can come in. I'm getting calls from my constituents in the 11th District about the meter changes. I know there are other districts where there are no meters. I know other places where the timing is different. We're going to work it all out. But the crisis we're in with the budget, the $400 million deficit, spurs us even forward quicker to look at revenue generating opportunities that are fair to all of our constituents. So I look forward to my map. I look forward to the overall city survey. And I look forward to the day when it isn't a two-hour block, but it's worked on demand and technology.
The clerk is asked to review what the council is voting on.
Mr. Clerk, do you run through the amendments that we have before us?
There's an instruction to the CAO to report back in three months with now a detailed report on how the increased rates are affecting businesses. And there was a friendly amendment by Mr. Lavange to have the neighborhood councils notified immediately when the rates are raised.
All the time, yeah, that should be there. But also, I add to the friendly amendment or is that?
We can, we can not accept anymore right now. The question's been called. We had public comment in committee on this. Obviously, there's been a lot of discussion today, but it required a council member reopening public hearing to hear that. But we will put those names in the record, Michael Carrion and also Stephen Box on that. We'd be happy to take comments as well as this progresses. So with that, we have those accepted as friendly amendments. If nobody objects to them, they are accepted by the body as friendly. Seeing no objection, we then have that as amended. Please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Four key nyes.
That is approved. And we will work together to schedule if folks would like to have comments on the actual rates. Because remember, what was before us today was just the machines. Then we can work together with our Chair of Transportation and Budget and Finance to schedule that. We'll make sure that the public has plenty of notice as well for that.
And joining us now is Assistant General Manager for the Department of Transportation, Amir Sadadi. Mr. Sadadi, welcome back to Council Week in Review.
Thank you, Russia. It's great to be back and Happy New Year to you and your viewers.
Well, Happy New Year to you too. You know, Mr. Sadadi, traffic and parking have always been a challenge in Los Angeles. And it seems like we're constantly on the increase. When was the last meter increase and how do we compare to surrounding cities?
That's a great question. And basically, the majority of our meters in Los Angeles have not had a rate increase for the past 20 years. And in that same timeframe, inflation has gone up about 90%. And as far as comparing to other cities, Los Angeles has had some of the lowest rates, not only locally here within California, but really across the nations. We were truly the lowest large metropolitan city with the majority of our meters being at 25 cents an hour.
Okay, but how much of an increase are we talking about? And will it be uniform throughout the city? And what's the projected revenue?
As part of the budget discussions last summer, the city council actually approved the ordinance where meter rates were going to increase to a dollar minimum and other areas from 75 cents basically doubling. So the range would be anywhere from $1 to $4 throughout the city. The second part of your question, the projected revenue, originally estimates were about additional 18 million. But unfortunately, with, I think, the state of the economy and some of the additional things that we're seeing, it's going to be a little bit less than that. But it would be an additional revenue to the already baseline of about 20 million a year where the city brings in on parking meters.
Now during the council meeting, it was said that there are areas in Los Angeles that don't have parking meters. How many meters does the city operate? And is there any free parking left in Los Angeles?
Well, the city currently operates about 40,000 or so parking meters. Majority of them are on-street. We also have some off-streets. That's a good question. And in fact, we do have some surface lots throughout the city that parking is still free. And also, many, many of our 474 square miles still have parking restrictions, but they are actually free and they don't have parking meters.
But you know, what about the old ones? We have quite a few that are still old and unreliable parking meters. So we'll, I understand the Department of Transportation is updating those? And there's a new program that will be implemented?
Yes, and that was part of why I was here last time. The department initiated a program. It was the Park and Pay Stations where through the direction of the city council and the mayor's office, we were able to change out approximately 15% of the city's 40,000 meters to have these new meter technology throughout the city. And we began that initiative back in December of 2007. We have been continuing with that initiative. And I'm happy to announce that we have completed that initiative throughout the city as far as the 15% that we're going to get changed out.
Wow. But now, some people may not see these old parking meters and may think, wow, this is free. So it definitely will take some getting used to, won't it?
Yes, and the department took a very extensive public outreach on that program where we provided, we created brochures in multi-language. We created a website with frequently asked questions. We actually went door-to-door on the businesses where department staff went to the businesses and provided the information. And also, our traffic officers were used as parking ambassadors. And they walked up and down the street and showing the customers how to use the machines. So it's been a real success. And we knew that we had to teach the public because now it's a change from the old meters where you physically went in and put a quarter right at the curb. You actually now have to remember a space number. And the concept is really pay and go. And it's worked out really good.
Well, now you mentioned depositing the coins in. But one of the positives about the single metering, of course, is that you'll actually be able to use your debit and credit cards, correct? As well as cash?
Absolutely. And that's been something we've seen already. Approximately 40% on average are using credit cards. And some areas of the city, we're seeing as high as 80%. So it's been a real customer convenience for the public to be able to not dig for quarters or not run into businesses to get changed, but to actually use their credit card.
And of course, living in the world of technology, I understand that we can now use our cell phones to also pay?
Yes, and the new meter technology has the ability for you to use your cellphone not only for payment, but also the technology allows a text message to be sent as long as your cellphone is able to receive a text message, which warns you your time is about to expire. And it offers you an opportunity to pay with your cellphone if there's still time limit left on that particular parking space.
Do you think that there might be some room for error in that, though? As far as using the cellphone, you know, because it is a technological device there?
Well, and that's why here at DOT, we took it a step at a time. And we've done a small pilot program before we extend this throughout the city. In our early results right now, the cellphone payment has been used and we have not seen many errors. It's just the usage isn't as high that we like to see. But I think in time, when more people, when we have more of these machines and when we have more technology and the people understand how it works, I think it will catch on, it will catch on quickly. And also, another feature of the cellphone, not only it works with the constituents and the public, it also gives text messages to our meter technicians when a meter is failing or is, has a low battery. So we can get out there in real time and fix them.
Now, in addition to the new park and pay meters, the hours of operation have also changed. What can we expect? And again, will these changes be the same everywhere throughout the city?
Yes, and again, as part of that budget discussion and the direction that we received from city council and the mayor's office, along with the ordinance change for the rates, the hours were also changed. And the main purpose of that was to use, to better use the curved space and utilize and create turnover. Many of our businesses that are open later in the evening and work the same on Saturday and Sundays, and they need the same turnover for those spaces. So majority of the, majority of the city will be extended from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. It's a two-hour window. And some locations throughout the city, small locations where there's entertainment districts, there is shopping, there is dining, there is restaurants or activity that goes beyond 8:00 PM. In those areas, the meters will run till midnight on Friday and Saturday. And again, some of those locations will also have Sunday hours of 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
And when can we expect the complete changeout of metering to be completed?
Well, the changeout of the pay stations, again, which is a small changeout, that's, that's about 100% complete. The meter rates, changing the rates, that has also about 95% complete. So the last step in this program is now really changing the hours. And the department anticipates completing that task by end of February.
Now, I understand you maintain a very comprehensive website. So should one of our viewers come across a malfunction, how can they report that or what should they do?
Well, yes, and let me say the website for the viewers. There's a lot of information on frequently asked questions. There's information about the rates and hours on our website. But as far as broken meters or if they come across a meter that they, it's not operating correctly, there is an 800 number. And let me read that. It's 1-877-215-3958. And we have operators, we have people ready to take those calls and for us to go out and fix those meters. But as I mentioned, I think the future holds that we get notified automatically through technology so that we can get there and fix those meters much faster.
Department of Transportation Assistant Manager Amir Sadadi, thank you so much for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thank you, Russia, for having me.
Again, the city council voted to receive and file the Transportation Committee report and approved amendments that will provide a report on the impact of the higher meter fees and additional meter hours. If you have any suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see on Channel 35 or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at 213-473-3978. We invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. Remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Fridays beginning at 10:00 AM. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings beginning at 10:00 AM. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 AM and 6:30 PM. And on Sunday at 9:30 AM. That concludes our program for the week ending January 9th, 2009. On behalf of Jack Popejoy and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Russia Goel. Thank you for watching and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Protecting our families.
Look at your daddy.
They take pride in what they do.
Call from the Amber Alert, missing child found and returned to parent suspect in custody.
LAPD is hiring. Become a part of the team. Visit us at joinlapd.com.
LA City View Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council Meeting for January 14th, 2009. We're in the John Farrow Council Chamber, room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. I want to thank the members of the public that are here, as well as our viewers on Channel 35. Channel 35 broadcasts us live throughout the city's cable system each meeting, and rebroadcasts us in the evening as well. We're also available online through the city's homepage at lacity.org, where there is a wealth of information on city services and your elected officials, but we also have webcasts of our council meetings, podcasts, and we have archived footage as well of our past council meetings for your convenience. And those are linked to our agendas so you can get right to the items that are of interest to you. We also are available through your telephones through a service called Council Phone. That's at 213-621-CITY, and you can listen into the full council meeting or any of our committee meetings as well. We want to let folks know as well that our agendas are available online and in person. Seventy-two hours in advance pursuant to the California state law called the Brown Act, and for our special meeting items, 24 hours in advance. You can pick those up in council chambers, or in the city clerk's office, or online at lacity.org. Our agendas are split into items that are agendized for public comment and those in which public comment has already been held. For those which public comment has already been held, it requires a council member to reopen the public hearing, to hear comments from the public. But for items that have not yet received a public hearing, if you'd like to fill out a card in the back and hand that to one of the sergeants-at-arms, we'd be more than happy to hear your comments and to work those into our agenda today. Finally, we have a part of our meeting which is for general public comment. That's for items that are not on the agenda but nevertheless under our jurisdiction, and same procedure, just fill out a card in the back, hand it to one of the sergeants-at-arms, and we'll be sure to hear your comments. If you live closer to Van Nuys, we also have a remote facility in which you're able to testify from our council chambers in Van Nuys. We physically are there usually the first Friday of the month, but for the other days, if you'd like to testify from City Hall in Van Nuys, you can do that, and we are able to hear you and see you here in council chambers as well as on Channel 35. And vice versa, when we're out in Van Nuys, you can do the same right here. I want to thank council members who are here pursuant to council rules on time. This is Councilmember Cardenas, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl. A few council members are excused, and I've heard one is caught in traffic due to the asphalt spill that happened on the freeway, but we are still waiting and should have somewhere close by. Councilmembers Gruel, Han, Wezar, and Weiss, if you'll please make your way as soon as possible to council chambers so we can begin the meeting. Thank you, everybody, for your patience, and we will begin shortly. If we do not get a quorum in the next few minutes, we will adjourn for lack of a quorum, but it is my hope that those council members will come down as soon as possible, and if the sergeants-at-arms can assist us to make sure that happens as well. Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Alec, and Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Wezar, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Westen, Zion, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zion moves, Ms. Perry seconds, without objection. Those minutes will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Cardenas approves, and, sorry, Mr. Cardenas moves, and Mr. Labonge seconds, without objection. Those will be approved as well. If we can run through the agenda?
First items on the agenda are items noted for public hearings, items 1 through 5 are street vacations, and the recommendation for council action is to instruct the city engineer to proceed.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call 1 through 5 special? Do we have any cards from the public on those?
No, there aren't.
Okay, we will open and close the public hearings on 1 through 5. Nobody wishes to call those special? Let's go ahead and open the roll and the instruction, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 6 through 9. Item 6 is the commissioner. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold 6 on the desk.
And then also on items 8 and 9, committee reports have been submitted on those two items.
Okay, we'll move the committee reports. 7 through 9, colleagues, anybody wishing to call special items 7, 8, and 9? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move those. Please open the roll. I'm sorry, one of them's an ordinance, and we do expect to have 12 members, so why don't we hold 7 until we have 12 members, and just open the roll on 8 and 9, please? Prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items 10 through 18, and those are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration, and I believe there is a substitute motion on item number 12 that is in the process.
Okay, and we have a card from the public on number 12 as well, so we'll call that special for cards from the public. Do we have any other cards on these items?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, we'll open and close the public hearings on the remainder. I'll call 18 special, myself. And anybody else wishing to call specials between 10 and 18? 10 and 18? Seeing none, let's go ahead on the balance, then. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, if we can call the roll for the special meeting?
Alec, and Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Wezar, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Westen, Zion, Garcetti, 11 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, we just have one item, 19. Do we have any cards from the public on that?
No, there are not.
Okay, let's open and close that public hearing. Anybody wishing to call 19 special? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll on 19, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, that is approved. If we can go back to the regular meeting?
And do you wish to adjourn the...
Yes, and let's adjourn the special meeting. We have one commission appointment, we'll do that, and then we will go to public comment for general public comment. If we can have before that Mr. Burton come forward on item number 6, and our chair of the Planning Land Use Management Committee, Mr. Reyes, who had the nomination in his committee, I'd like to recognize him and thank Mr. Burton for his willingness to serve. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I think we are very fortunate to have Mr. Byrne as a candidate for this position. He has gone through that trial by fire, worked in the west side of planning, area planning commission, great experience. His professional life, I believe, reinforces the kind of skill set that we need when we analyze these very tough issues when it comes to land use policies that affect our housing, our transportation, our circulation, and everything else that affects the quality of life. So I'm going to thank Mr. Byrne for being here, for committing his time and his professional support to the city, what he has in the past, and I look forward to working with him in the future. Mr. Byrne, would you like to share a little bit about your background, perhaps some of the goals you have for this commission, and a perspective on what you think we should be doing to improve the quality of life? Mr. Byrne.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, and I'd like to start off by thanking the mayor for appointing me and for the council for considering my nomination. I've spent the last four and a half years on the West Los Angeles Area Planning Commission, serving the 5th and 11th council districts. Two years of that was vice president, and the last year was as the president, and have had the opportunity to work with a lot of diverse communities on issues that are really impactful to the west side of Los Angeles and to the city. My father came to Los Angeles in 1945 after World War II, and went to USC on the GI Bill. I was born here, my children were born here, and I hope my children's children will be, and I'm very much an Angeleno through and through, and I'm excited about the opportunity to continue to have an impact and be part of a team that is helping to shape the future of the city and how people interact, and how they commute to work, and issues of climate change and others. So I'm very excited to be a part of this and excited to move forward. I think there are a number of priorities for the commission. I met with Commissioner or Planner, Planning Director Goldberg, in preparation for this new assignment, and she laid out a very ambitious agenda that the planning department and the city have going forward, including having five community plans come through the planning commission, which has never been done before. And thanks to the additional staff the planning department has under Mr. Reyes's leadership and others, they're going to be able to achieve that. There's the implementation of the 12-2 program, there's the sign ordinance which comes before the planning commission next week, as well as mixed income and other major issues for the city. So I look forward to hopefully helping to build consensus amongst the commission and with the council and the mayor's office moving forward. I work hard to do that at the planning commission on the west side, and look forward to being part of a team that's going to help move the city forward.
I want to thank the mayor for picking a person who is so well-prepared for this role. Imagine the day in which community planners can go to our neighborhoods and ask the stakeholders, "Where do you see housing being built? Where do you see your parks being established? Where will be the most ideal location for circulators that can feed into our MTA bus routes, that can connect us into our rail lines?" These are the type of questions and the type of input that we need. And as a steward in the planning commission, we hope we can continue providing the kind of guidance and develop the type of policies that gives these stakeholders that opportunity, and perhaps provide the type of city that will allow our grandchildren to enjoy what we would have been able to enjoy in these past decades. So with that, I want to thank you, Mr. Byrne, for being here, for your hard work, and invite my colleagues to ask questions. If not, a big yes for our candidate to be on the planning commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Our next speaker is Mr. Cardenas, after that is Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much. It's interesting, you touched on your family, and thank you for doing that. It's very personal, but very important for people to understand how committed you are to the community, the city of Los Angeles. But you wouldn't happen to be related to the famous politician, John Burton, would you?
I am not related to John Burton.
Oh, okay, all right. I'm sure you probably have politicians in your family, but anyway, that's another story. But now, what, can you, can you give us an example of... Let me start by explaining what I'm getting at is, a lot of times, people come into planning meetings, or even council meetings or what have you, where there's a body that's gathered, be appointed, or elected, or what have you, and they think, "Well, I want things done a certain way, and I feel very passionate about it. This is my neighborhood, or my block, or my street." Yet at the same time, isn't it more complicated than that sometimes? It's not just about passion, about what people would like to see or not see happen in the neighborhood. Doesn't it come down to rules, regulations, laws, property rights, all these kinds of things? Aren't all of those things and a million other things have to be balanced out by somebody like you, even though you're in a volunteer position? Thank you very much. Even though you're spending your personal time reading up on all these files and then deciding how you're going to vote? Isn't it that kind of interplay of information and responsibility that comes your way when you take votes on a commission like this?
Absolutely. And I've had the luxury of spending the last, as I said, four and a half years out on the west side, and why that's, why that role was interesting was I got to see the ordinance that were crafted here in the city council, and the policies that were put forth by the planning commission in the mayor's office, I got to see them implemented, and how they actually worked on the ground. And sometimes you have city ordinance, you have state law considerations, you have policy implications, you have the vision of the mayor, and the council member, and the planning department, and you have to weigh all those issues alongside of what, you know, often a developer wants to achieve, and very, very passionate community members, what their issues are, and what they care about. And I think the best way to do that, and from my perspective, is really through good communication and building consensus. I mean, I was watching Hillary Clinton's confirmation hearings yesterday, and she said something about how America needs more partners and less adversaries, and I think that's good advice for all of us in a lot of ways, and especially in the planning department and the planning process. All too often, you have developer versus community, or business interests versus housing advocates, or the planning commission against the planning department. And I think that working together early on in the process, understanding everybody's interests, can help policymakers and decision-makers make the best choices.
Thank you for pointing that out, because it is very involved, and I think it's important for people to understand that you get that. You're going to be on the firing line sometimes, some people are going to glare at you, some people are going to be mad at you, or what have you. But I've seen, I know of your work, I know who you are, and I know you're very conscientious. So once again, thank you for offering of yourself to the city of Los Angeles. And I'm glad you brought that up, because I'd like to remind people that there was a project in my district where the neighboring community, the households, didn't like the land use decision that the city had to contemplate, and they eventually came to my office, and my staff went to some meetings, and they crowded the room, etc., and I explained to them, "You know, in this country, every person, whether it's a single-family residence or a big 20-acre property, the property owners have rights too. And if the city of Los Angeles were to go along with what the community wanted," which basically they were saying, "We don't want him to build anything," that's technically a taking if we do something as egregious as that, and we do it in a certain way. What it means by a taking is that landowner could actually sue us, and then take the taxpayers' money, and then some judge will still let him put something there that the community didn't like. So after I explained that to them, I could see it in their eyes that they understood that it was more complicated, and I offered to talk to the community, because there were two leaders from the community that came forward with the petitions and all that. And then when I explained to them how complicated it is, and how I'm listening to what they're saying, but how they're putting the city, not me so much, but the city and the taxpayers, in a bad position if we gave them their wishes, the bottom line is, they did agree that they need to understand better. The guy ended up doing all these kinds of mitigations, put up this nice big wall for them, things of that nature. Lo and behold, I ran into one of the leaders of that group at a groundbreaking ceremony, and he thanked me for helping them understand that, and they were so excited and pleased with the project that the guy ended up doing, that he said, "Do you want to come over to the barbecue where we're going to be honoring the developer?" And my jaw dropped. And I said, "What did you say?" And he says, "Yeah, we're going to have a barbecue for him. He's been a wonderful neighbor, he's done everything we've asked of him, he's gone above and beyond the call of duty, and what they're doing next door, we don't even hear it, it doesn't bother us, and it's a great improvement to the property." My point is, I think it's that kind of responsibility that you have, and I have, and all of us have, that when people disagree, at the least, what we should do is try our best to get them to understand the facts. They can still believe what they want, they can still be mad at us, or what have you, but at least we help them understand what the law is and what the responsibilities are, and try to, that we're just trying to be responsible. So once again, thank you very much, and I'm sure you have examples like that of your own by now.
Thank you very much. I think that's a profound point. I'm a lawyer by training, and, you know, we talked earlier about ordinances and state law, but there's a federal constitution which guarantees some sort of property rights, and I think as a, you know, especially as a volunteer on a commission in the city, we need to be aware of decisions that we make that could potentially cause the city liability. This is not a time with a large budget deficit and other things where the city can afford that. So I'm very mindful of that and appreciate the point.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to the dais here today.
Thank you.
And Happy New Year. Just for disclosure, you and I served on a commission for two years. I was chair of the taxing policy for the new economy, and we did 17 hearings across the state. We did a fair and balanced report. I went to Arnold, and he did nothing with it, of course. But hopefully Karen Bass will use it as a backdrop to the tax reform that our great state needs. Now, you've been on the APC, which is the Area Planning Commission for the west side, and you are a developer. So when you sit on this commission, how are you going to be fair and balanced when your interests are that, basically, from your perspective, of a developer? Give the non-developer community a sense to appreciate your fairness.
Sure, sure. And thank you very much. I enjoyed serving on you. That was the first commission I ever served on at the state.
You worked for Time Warner at the time, didn't you?
I did, I did, and I wish the governor had followed some of our commission recommendations, because I don't think we would have the same budget deficit.
Well, remember, it was Gray Davis... Well, remember, it was Gray Davis who appointed us, and then they canned him, and then the new one just didn't want to touch it.
And just a point for the record, I don't work for developer. We are a real estate fund that invests in housing and mixed-use urban projects throughout the country focused on workforce housing, just as a matter of record. And I would just point to, I think, my record on the area planning commission and working with the community and the developer and the council office to build consensus on the cases that we came forward. There were many times where we decided against the development interest in those cases, and many times where I led that charge and made the motion, because it wasn't the right plan for the community. It wasn't in line with the policy that had been set forth by the planning commission and the council.
Please hold my time. Hold my time.
Time will be held.
And so I worked very hard to be balanced in that sense. And, you know, I would ask people to look at my record and what I've done in the past and judge me on the decisions I make going forward.
Character and scale of community is a big thing in the 11th district.
Absolutely.
Even though it might say zoned R3, people don't know, like the Louise Avenue project, which is sort of like a King Kong coming over the mountain, when everything else is R1. And the community really got after me. I was in the biggest mob scene I've been in four years, and they blamed everything on me. And the fact that it was R3, they went through the process, and by the time I saw it growing, it was a project. And the courts have dealt with it, and I don't want to go into the legal aspects of it. But how do you explain to community, if there's an R3 piece of property next to an R1 piece of property, what their rights are or what we should do at this particular point when we see a whole block of R1s, but there seems to be maybe 20 years ago, something was designated R3?
Well, that's one of, I think, the bigger challenges in the planning process, because often the developer or project owner will say, I purchased this property, had a certain set of zoning on it. You know, if we're working with the planning department, I need some predictability in order to develop. But the community will say, all you have to do is look around and see that this is, you know, these are little bungalows, and you want to build, you know, something that doesn't fit here at all. And I think that's why the charter, you know, contemplates a planning commission and an area planning commission, because you have a group of citizens up there who have to use their judgment on balancing these issues. And scope, scale, and character are very, very important. I mean, the Venice Pacific Plan is a great example of where in virtually every development, somebody comes forward and says, this doesn't fit within the scope of what was intended. And frankly, the council office plays a very important role. As a, as an area planning commissioner, we often looked to the wisdom of the council office, who had had the time to meet in the community with all sides and really balance the issues, and helping us to decide what was very, very important.
Last question on this is affordable housing. We don't have that much in the 11th district. Value of land's very high. We've got the ocean, we've got the sea breeze, the mountains, all that good stuff, the wetlands. But yet, we need affordable housing for obvious reasons. My district's gridlocked, as you know, because everybody's coming in to work in the morning, especially in the heart of my district, which is the city of Santa Monica. How do we create more affordable housing in my particular parochial interest on the west side?
Well, I think there's a number of ways. One is the, the market has done a little bit of itself. The median home price in Los Angeles is down, I think, about $150,000 from where it was at its peak two years ago. And there's ordinances like the implementation of SB 1818, which was passed by this city council. And we're going to have mixed income, the mixed income policy coming before the planning commission and the council probably later this year to address those issues. I do think part of it is an education process of public officials and community leaders about the importance of living close to where you work. Gridlock is caused, as you said, by people driving into the district. If you can build appropriate housing of the appropriate scale but closer to job centers and where jobs are, you're going to have less traffic, less traffic, you know, as you go forward. The other thing, Mr. Reyes and I were talking about this this morning, is implementation of circulators, more dash lines, more public transportation to move around communities so that people don't have to get in their car and drive and park and create gridlock.
Parking is a problem.
Absolutely.
People like to get variances for parking. People like the grandfather phantom parking. And then we have the whole basic issue that we don't have mass transit. So when we like to say, well, you know, we can build the units, but we don't need the parking, because we want to encourage people to get out of their car, well, where do they get out to? So how do you deal with that issue?
Well, I think we have a subway-to-the-sea plan that apparently will be done by 2032.
Yeah.
And I think we have to change the law. I mean, we saw a lot of these cases at the APC, particularly in Venice, where there was an in-loo fee for parking, but a price that was set for that that was 20 years old.
Right.
It just didn't make any sense. And, you know, virtually every developer that came forward said, oh, it's much cheaper for me to pay this fee than it is, than it is to build the parking. Now, that's not the job of the APC to change. The APC is an implementing tool and a quasi-judicial tool, but the planning commission and the city council need to look at those issues, because parking is particularly bad in the areas. I work in Westwood. Parking is terrible. I think it hurts the community there. I think it's hard for the businesses to thrive. It frustrates the community members. And in Venice and areas of your council district, it's an issue as well.
Well, I threw the hardball at you, and I must say that it was a great opportunity when we worked together for two years. You're a bright, sharp, committed community leader, and thank you for stepping up to the plate to go to the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Many more people to ask you questions. Janice Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, first of all, thank you for agreeing to serve in this voluntary position with the city planning commission, one of the most important commissions, I think, in the city, next to the airport and the harbor. You know, one of the issues that has come up recently in my district is the relationship between the planning department and our over 90 neighborhood councils. Some neighborhood councils are very involved in planning issues. And one of the things the planning department has done, they, a couple of years ago, they started planning 101 for neighborhood councils. They're trying to educate the grassroots organizations on how it's appropriate to weigh in on some of these planning issues. Something has come up with some of my neighborhood councils, that they felt the communication between the department and the neighborhood councils was lacking. There are some neighborhood councils that want, like, the reports when they're released. I mean, that's how involved they are in a particular project going on in their district. And they weren't feeling like the communication was forthcoming in a way that they wanted. So what I did yesterday was I introduced the idea of having an MOU between the planning department and neighborhood councils, much like we have with DWP. And I don't know what that ends up looking like, but it's an opportunity to get the department and neighborhood councils together at the table to see what it is that would be helpful to neighborhood councils as they move forward with trying to weigh in on development projects in their district. I just wanted to throw that out to you, because I would love for you to just kind of look at that, pay attention to that, maybe even, you know, shepherd that a little bit. So I'd like to know what your thoughts are on that.
Sure. First of all, thank you for the comments, and I want to particularly thank your family, because I got my start in planning, because I was appointed by your brother initially to the area planning commission.
Really?
Before being reappointed by Mayor Vierigosa, so thank you. And I look forward to also working with you, because one of the five community plans this year is going to be in the San Pedro area.
Yes, exactly.
So I look forward to the opportunity to work with you. I think an MOU is a good idea, and any vehicle in which you can get really good communication between the neighborhood council and the planning department. What I've experienced on the west side and also in the other projects we've done in the private sector around the city is early communication with community groups and the neighborhood council, respectful, real communication, not paying lip service, sitting down and saying, here's what we're thinking about doing. What do you think about this? How can we make it better? You know, the development community can't always make every change and make everybody happy, but in virtually every case where you can sit down early on and have a real, respectful dialogue back and forth with the neighborhood council and the community leadership, it makes a big difference in getting better projects. So I think any formal process to do that makes a lot of sense.
I mean, I agree. I mean, you know, back in the day, before we had neighborhood councils, many times neighborhoods wouldn't even know a project was happening until they heard the bulldozers, you know, grading the property down the street. And then they got involved, and then it really was problematic, because then you were, you were stalling permits and you were costing developers money. This way, I agree, I'm so glad to hear you say that. I think at the end of the day, it'll be a better project. It'll be a better project when you get the neighborhood involved. Early on, there's good communication, so I love hearing that. And I will, on behalf of the Hans, we're glad you're still around.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Our next one is Councilmember Garcetti, followed by Councilmember Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues, for the discussion. And I will be brief, because I just wanted to rise to speak to the character and the person who's before us and offer my very strong support. I've known Sean Burton for many years. He's a personal friend as well as somebody I've worked closely with in changing the face of Los Angeles and working in some national issues as well. I want to thank the mayor. It's a great nomination. We've spoken privately about some of your ideas of making Los Angeles, its building code, more in line with green building and sustainability. And this council passed the largest green building ordinance in the country this past year, and we very much look forward to working closely with you on that. I also wanted to point out and just ask you one question, and I want to thank your family for being here as well, your lovely wife, Teresa, who's here. But I also wanted to ask you one question, because you were very important the last time when Mr. Reyes and I and some other folks worked on the idea of what was then called inclusionary zoning, now mixed income. You were a very helpful voice, of kind of a progressive voice, saying that this is a policy that can work, in which whenever something is built, any housing is built, new housing in the city of Los Angeles, like many other municipalities, that a percentage of that should be targeted, income means tested towards folks who are working class or poor. And that is very near and dear to my heart. I know it is very near and dear to Mr. Reyes's heart as well. And I know Mr. Weston, who's out sick today, is working on that with Mr. Reyes and the mayor. But if you could just share your opinion on, you know, the turn in the economy, in some ways, this is a good moment to be able to do this, because there's not a lot of new deals coming forward anyway. It's a moment to be able to do that without the pressure of people saying, well, this is going to kill deals, et cetera. But could you kind of trace out for us your thoughts on that? And how do we get to, yes, how do we get to a percentage where we are including that and using not taxes, not federal money, not changing zoning, but getting to a place where we actually use the market itself to be able to provide more affordable housing for workforce here in Los Angeles?
First of all, thank you, President Garcetti, for your comments. I value your friendship and thank you for your support. You know, mixed income or inclusionary zoning is very challenging. I don't have to tell anybody in this room how passionate all the different stakeholders and constituencies are about affordable housing and development in the city. And I think it's going to take a significant amount of time to craft a policy that makes sense. I think all too often, it's forgotten that people simply think it's the business or development community versus, you know, affordable housing advocates, and people fight over what's the right percentage and how could we implement that. But communities and neighborhood councils, to Ms. Hahn's point, have very, very strong opinions about mixed income housing, because it's going to go in their neighborhoods. And they want to make sure it's designed appropriately, and it's going to fit, and there's not going to be additional traffic and et cetera. So it's very, very complicated. I do think any mixed income policy has to have significant incentives. Some will tell you that it's a difficult time to pass mixed income, because the real estate market is going through a very difficult transformation. There's a lot of uncertainty. But also, to your point, people are not nearly as busy as they once were. And if you're going to, you're going to have to do this at some point. It's right for the city. You know, you have hundreds of thousands of people moving to Los Angeles. They're going to need a place to live, and it's very difficult to find something affordable here. So, you know, I think this is something that's going to be dealt with. It's my impression from talking with the mayor and from other, hearing from other members of the council, that this will be a priority this year. So, you know, I look forward to hopefully continuing to be a progressive voice on that and also one who, who has, you know, entitled and financed over 50 workforce housing projects throughout the country and understand the challenges of making a project work. I've seen a lot of projects succeed, and frankly, I've seen a lot of them fail. And so I think it's going to have to be a dialogue that starts very early with all the stakeholders, and we'll need the mayor's leadership and the council's leadership in order to pull together a plan that works.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. President. I represent an area that includes Central City East and Skid Row, and as such, I have not only built a large volume of permanent supportive housing, it's housing for people who are really on the lowest end of the income spectrum, and I have welcomed it. But I don't see that happening citywide, and I'm pretty convinced that if we don't create a policy that affords the opportunity for all council members to participate and have their views represented, I really don't believe we're ever going to pass any sort of citywide policy that will encourage the production of low-income housing. I am a particular fan of low-income housing, mixed in, with mixed income housing for sustainability, because I don't believe in creating economic ghettos. So I'd like to hear your view. Quick synopsis on how you actually think you can get to a citywide policy that could be adopted, number one. And two, as a developer, and you're familiar with having to recuse yourself, you're a lawyer, you understand, how you'll handle recusing yourself from voting on citywide issues that may go to the benefit of some of your own development projects in the city of Los Angeles?
Sure.
Hold my time.
So on the first, on the first, you mentioned Skid Row and the homeless, and, you know, I am by no means an expert on that area of housing, but in many ways, that is the most critical and the most desperate of what, of what needs to be dealt with, especially homeless families with children, which, as you know, is becoming a rising issue and one that's, one that's getting worse by the day. As for affordable housing, you know, I think a mixed income policy, as we talked about, is critical, and I'm glad to hear you make the point about not creating economic ghettos. I think many of the mistakes that we've seen in the past have to do with the fact that, you know, you've taken all of the affordable housing and you've lumped them together in one project. Obviously, we've seen the issues with Cabrini-Green in Chicago and other public housing projects. But also, even in the implementation of existing mixed unit, mixed income ordinances around the country, you've seen problems, there have been problems whereby they've taken all the low-income folks and stuck them in one floor or one building and kind of segregated them from, from the rest of the project and the community, which is a real mistake. So I think any, any solution needs to be inclusive and truly needs to be mixed in order for it to be effective. And I think there's lots of models from around the country of where that's been done successfully, and LA can build on that.
And I really hope you can be a strong voice for bringing along other parts of the city in a way that they can vote for something that is citywide and that is actual, actually pragmatic and recognizes that we are in an economic downturn, not theoretical, but would actually result in the production of units. And then on the issue of recusal, if you can answer that. Hold my time.
Sure. Sure. I will address the issue of recusal. You know, in the past four and a half years, there hasn't been a single project at the APC, for example, that has come, any of our projects at City View that have come before. I'm very careful, very, very careful when it comes to that sort of thing, and we currently have nothing that we own that is, is set to come before the CPC at all. But of course, if I saw anything, not just of a project that City View is involved with, but any project that a builder or developer who we have partnered with, if that came before, I would, of course, recuse myself and not vote on it. Very, very careful about those things and, you know, take my role in the public trust very seriously.
Right. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you very much. Hello. Ms. Burton, how are you?
Good.
Have they been tough on you, I hope?
They have.
Okay.
They have.
Thank you. Colleagues, I want to stand up, and I was here for probably about half of the presentation this morning and the questions, and I want to stand up and full support of Sean for this appointment. I always question people's sanity when they want to serve on the citywide, as well as the area planning commissions. But looking at your experience over the last several years and serving on an APC, it's really great to have had that local community experience going on to the citywide. I think, as you talked about earlier, and the coordination between transportation and planning, I mean, the projects that come to the citywide planning commission oftentimes have a big transportation component or controversy or challenge. And so the hope is that as you go forward, we'll look at that. And there's always that rub, as Mr. Reyes and I talk about, which is how many parking spaces you have and how you limit them because you want people to take public transportation. And yet, we don't have a seamless system yet and how we do that. And so it's my hope, and it's a great citywide planning commission, and Jane did a, a great job there of really trying to ensure that the community had a voice, which I hope you'll, you'll speak to as well, the importance of that as the citywide planning commissioner, as well as trying to understand, you know, how the implementation of AB 375, right, is that 375? Or SB 375, I think it is, and how that is going to have an impact on what the commission does in going forward. And if you could just hold my time, Mr. President.
Which is, thank you, which AB 375?
This is the Steinberg one. I'm sorry, I'm blanking out on the number, which is the whole implementation of having traffic, you know, you're looking at infrastructure and transportation related to planning.
Right, as part of, well, thank you, first of all, for your comments and support. And as you know, I have a tremendous amount of respect for, for you and what you've accomplished on the council as you move on to other citywide endeavors. And, and also your leadership on transportation within the council. I think that's a critical role, and I, I don't know what sort of communication there's been between the planning commission and the MTA and the other transit bodies of commissions. But I think that's absolutely critical for, for planning. And, you know, we, we talk a lot about sustainability and how to make a project more green. Well, you know, one of the best ways to make a project green is to locate it close to jobs and transportation centers so that people don't have to drive their cars. That's different than having a green roof or ventilated kitchen, but it's a critical component that has a very meaningful impact on our environment and the climate. So I think transportation issues need to be first and foremost in designing community plans and thinking about where to put housing. You know, Mr. Reyes spoke earlier about going to communities and talking about, you know, where do you see housing in your community? And the more leadership that can come from the planning commission and the council and the mayor about putting developments close to transportation corridors, close to subway stops, close to bus lines, I think it'd just be critical.
Great. And I think that, you know, one of the things the citywide planning commission can help us with is looking at some policy issues that are related to that. Because you, you hear a lot of what we're hearing and coming back with, here are some potential changes or issues, and to have that interaction, not just on project by project, but generally on how we can make some changes. And as we look at a potential economic stimulus that is coming forward, we hope on a, a number of projects, I recently introduced a motion to look at ways in which we can expedite those projects that are not the big controversial ones, but ways in which we can move through things to be able to get more sales tax and business tax in the city of Los Angeles. And everyone benefits from that. So hopefully, through your own personal experience as well as a commissioner, ways in which we can improve how planning, building, safety, transportation work in the city with transparency and allowing there to be public comment. But in addition, where are the, you know, those focal points where there's problems where it takes three or four months still to get something out of a department? And where, where those challenges are because it, it doesn't move any of us to have something sitting there, which potentially is already going to be approved and is going forward. And Mr. Reyes was nice enough to sign that with me to move forward and look at how we can do that. So I just wanted to stand up and support of your appointment and look forward to you serving on the planning commission. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Huizar, followed by Mr. Labonge.
Mr. Burton, now keep my comments brief, but I think this is an excellent recommendation, as been mentioned earlier today by the mayor. But quite quickly, what I wanted to point out is that I think we are in a great time for the city of Los Angeles when it comes to planning. We have a general manager who gets it, who wants to do real planning, who's really making some changes in the department for us to do what is required of us in terms of really following our community plans, following our master plan, which is something this city has really not done historically. And what has resulted, in my opinion, is haphazard development that really doesn't make sense a lot of times, especially in low-income communities where a lot of the uses that are not welcomed in other parts of the city, we've been dumping them in certain parts of the city. So I think that we are in a great time for the city of Los Angeles to, with this general manager and what I think is a proactive planning commission, which I like. I sit on the Plumb Committee along with Mr. Reyes and Mr. Weiss. And when I see and hear of proposals coming from the commission that have been thought out, vetted with public participation, we need that additional voice for the city. And so I welcome the proactive commission that we've seen. I know your predecessors actually led a lot of that, and I hope you could do the same. Knowing you and your background and what you've done and accomplished, I think we will see more of the same. So welcome and thank you for your service.
Great, thank you very much.
Mr. Labonge.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate your work, Sean. And as Mr. Carter said earlier, when you spoke about your family and your family, your sons wanting to be here, that's an amazing thought and a dream. And I hope the same for my family, as I am here, for my dad and my grandfather, et cetera. Also, I want to thank Jade Nusher for her work and, and the vision that she had there. And all the commission is a very diverse group there. I just want to, my opinion, and you know, I know it's transforming, things have transformed in Los Angeles the last hundred years. We are going to be transforming again. I do believe in neighborhoods, and if you preserve neighborhoods and enhance the density where there's transit enhanced, where there's infrastructure that can handle it, it works. Our biggest pushback is when the neighborhoods feel threatened. So you have to balance that out as well. And I do believe in the acts of his information, his knowledge, his power. And I would love to see a lot of people driven to the website for the community plans, for the zoning. People wake up and they say, I didn't know this was happening. Well, it's been zoned like that for 20, 30 years, but they don't know. A proposal that I had that hasn't been successfully implemented yet is when you close escrow, you have to sign a series of papers, including you change your, your gas shut-off valve for earthquake, you change your sliding doors because of glass. And there'd be one that you be informed what community plan you're in, what area of the city that you're in, and what is your zoning and your adjacent zoning. Sometimes people wake up and they, they don't know in their backyard. That's allowed. That's allowed and encouraged. We've had some tough decisions there. Just give me a 30-second painted picture, Los Angeles, 2019, 10 years from now. Give me a minute.
Sure, thank you. Well, you know, the city's going to continue to grow, and I think that's a reality that everybody needs to be prepared for in communities and the council and everything else. All too often, I think, folks say, well, if we don't build it, they won't come. And that's just not true. You know, people come here and they double and they triple up in apartments and the streets get more and more crowded. So it's the vision of really planning for that going forward. And I have a tremendous amount of spec for Director Goldberg and what she's trying to accomplish. Simply pushing five community plans through the planning commission this year is quite a task. And one of those will be Hollywood, which I look forward to working with you and Mr. Garcetti on. But I think, you know, back to Ms. Gruehl's point, transportation has to be a critical part of this growth because these communities are changing and they aren't transforming. It doesn't mean they need to change your character, but you are going to have more people, and we need to figure out a way to address that so we can continue the, the great livability of many of these neighborhoods.
Right. I don't want to see roads widened, you know, but I want to see choke points removed. The 101, just to let you on traffic, because transportation is important, we need from infrastructure as far as buses and trains and subways. But the 101, which goes from the West Valley all the way across through the 134 to Glendale, when you go through the North Hollywood there and Lucca Lake, it goes down to two lanes in each direction.
Awful.
We've got to work with the state where appropriately to get that flow, remove the choke points, and also not be blind by that, that people still move by vehicles. We're not going to get everybody on bicycles or in buses in the, in a, in a long while, but we've got to have that, that blend that is there. Thank you for your service. Enjoy your service. And I think what also is a benefit from the charter changes, the area planning commissions have been able to let the big super planning commission think of big wide issues, so exercise your vision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I hope that, I haven't been able to confirm this, but I'm either the first or one of the first area planning commissioners who's been on the ground implementing policy to come to the city planning commission. And, and I'm a big fan of the APCs, and I think they do a lot of work engaging the community, and I look forward to bringing that perspective, citywide.
You had perfect attendance, and you also did a good report, so, you know, I'm teasing.
Thank you, I tried, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge, Mr. Alakon, followed by Mr. Reyes.
Hey, Sean. Since coming back to city council about a year and a half ago, we've never, never disapproved a nominee that got to this point. So I think you're in pretty good shape.
Thank you.
But we asked all these questions because we want to impart our perspective on key issues, and that's, I think, the primary reason why, why we do this. One of the greatest concerns that I have from a macro perspective is the, is the fact that the city of Los Angeles is becoming a rental society. And in fact, it has become a rental society. 69% of the families that live in Los Angeles are living in homes that are rented, not owned. The economic crisis has only contributed to the difficulties that, that that kind of society presents. And our constituents are just not financially literate, not necessarily the voters, but, but in general, we have a society that is not financially literate and capable of, of managing their financial affairs in a way that, that builds our society. When we talk about having a nest egg or rainy day foundation, we just don't see it. So I always said that, that we must increase the proportion of homeownership in Los Angeles. I wrote the legislation that created the Cal Home Program. I think you're somewhat familiar with that. And I absolutely believe in homeownership as a way to not just solve families' financial success for the future, but also as a way to build a better society and create better quality of life throughout. So as a planning commissioner, there's, there's often a temptation to increase the density of a particular property, to allow for rental space in a, when there's pressures to squeeze people into more and more boxes so that we can meet this so-called demand that is in fact created by low wages and miserable jobs. And, and are you going to be able to stand up to that? I know that your company invests in homeownership. And I hope that you, you replicate that in the planning commission. I think you need to fight for it because the pressures are so strong to give in to people that want to create small boxes and a rental society that even transcends what we have today. So I'd like your thoughts on that and also how we're going to get out of this bad economy. But anyway.
I may leave the second one. Well, thank you for your comments. And Mr. Alakon, it's, it's a pleasure to hear somebody talk about homeownership. I think in the press in the last few months, it's become very popular to bash homeownership, to blame the current problems on the push for a higher homeownership rate. And I think that's a mistake. You are correct in the fact that the way that most Americans ever build any kind of net worth, the vast majority of Americans build it through their home, through equity in their home. And it has been the engine to move Americans from, from the working class to the middle class since World War II. Homeownership is disproportionate. There's a much higher Anglo homeownership rate in the 70s, and if you look at African-American and Latino, it's down in the 40s. So by definition, if, if homeownership has been the engine to move people in the middle class, and you have certain groups that are held down below 50%, you're going to have real societal issues that are a problem, and you see them all the time. So, you know, I dedicate my life, when I'm not serving the public, and my career and my focus and my passion is creating homeownership opportunities. We focus on people who make between 80 and 150% of area median income, workforce housing, police officers, teachers, nurses, government workers. That's the focus of what we do. And I hope to bring that perspective to the planning commission as we're creating the community plans. We're going to be working on the Silmar Plan in a couple of months, which I know you have a strong interest in and will help in, in lead in developing. And I think, you know, leadership from, from the council office and the mayor about the fact that there still needs to be, still needs to be a serious homeownership component of our community planning, not just, again, sticking people in boxes because we have bodies, but creating this supply so that we can continue to have this engine for the middle class. So I'm, I'm very aware of it and passionate about it and hope to bring that perspective to the commission. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes, to conclude.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, as you've heard, we have a tremendous wealth of experience, a strong desire to build a healthy city. And one of the things I wanted to thank, Mr. Burton, in our conversation, we talked about how we improve communication between the planning commission and this council body. It's been unfortunate at times that we learn about a different point of view or a disagreement over the media in not so collegial terms. And it's been rather, I would say, distracting in terms of getting to the objective, which is creating solutions for the city. So I wanted to thank Mr. Burton because in our conversation, he did speak to how we can change the posture, the leadership in the planning commission and have the type of dialogue that does speak to solutions, does allow us to have a conversation before it gets to a place in which you can't take back your words. So I want to thank you for that spirit. I look for that camaraderie, and I'm hoping that we can build up that dialogue as we enter some of these very emotional and controversial policy decisions when it comes to where we build housing, how we build it, who benefits, and how do we deal with the traffic impacts because of the housing? And I say this over and over again, folks tell me, why do you want to build more housing in this city? And I keep responding, the people are already here. They need the housing. I have three or four families living in two, three-bedroom units. They need a roof over their head, and we need to find a way to establish that housing stock, not to bring in more people, but to take care of the folks already here. So I strongly encourage, and I vote in supporting Mr. Burton in this commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, Mr. Burton, we're now going to take the vote. Keep your fingers crossed on this one. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
There you go. Congratulations to you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Garcetti, we're going to do the presentation, number 18. Number 18's coming up next.
Can we do fourth with on number 19, please?
Number 19, fourth with. Madam Clerk, fourth with on 19. And Mr. Garcetti, we're now up to celebrity guests.
Thank you. And we will do public comments just after and before the rest of the meeting, and appreciate folks understanding with that because of time constraints that are here. Thank you for the debate that happened around the planning commissioner appointment, which I think was a very good one. Colleagues, today on item 18, we are celebrating one of the great assets of the city of Los Angeles, NBC4 Los Angeles, KNBC, which today we are celebrating, it's an owned and operated station of NBC Universal, which serves not just the city of Los Angeles, but the Southland and surrounding areas, and has accomplished incredible excellence in broadcast journalism and entertainment, a leader in the industry in celebrating its 60th anniversary this year. 60 years, six decades of news, of entertainment, of sports. Thank you, Tom Labonge, of some of the best journalism and the most important community building that we have seen. On January 16th, way back in 1949, it was NBC4 Los Angeles that began as KNBH, owned by the National Broadcasting Company, debuted with three hours and 40 minutes of programming, I think back in Hollywood at the time, which followed a 15-minute test pattern and music session. Today, the station operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And when NBC4 launched, Los Angeles was the fifth largest city in the United States with only 80,000 television sets, which now there are probably more in a single council district than back then. Today, the Los Angeles television market is the second largest in the country. NBC is viewed by more than 5 million households, reaching 15 million viewers regularly. And it's the first to use the split screen and the first television station to operate its own laboratory for high-speed developing and processing of color news film way back. NBC4 is a leader in new media and one of the first stations in the market to launch its own website to better assist the residents of the city of Los Angeles and the world to receive important news information in a timely manner. And NBC4 has an outstanding record of service, having supported numerous local community organizations through sponsorships, community outreach programs, and on-air awareness campaigns and local programming. I also want to say, we're joined here by Colleen Williams, who's no stranger to this podium, who's given her time on domestic violence here whenever we have Domestic Violence Awareness Week, has been our emcee and a great, great voice on that issue. Paul Moyer, who's with us as well, who's helped in so many different ways on the community side of what NBC does as well. This outstanding record of service embodied by these two individuals, but really by an entire station, supports numerous local community organizations through sponsorships, community outreach programs, and on-air awareness campaigns and local programming. With its 60-year commitment of community involvement, dedication to journalistic integrity, and quality programming, the station is worthy of public appreciation and recognition. I'm honored to announce that by adoption of this resolution, Los Angeles City Council, along with the mayor, do hereby declare January 16th as NBC4 Los Angeles Day in the city of Los Angeles. And it gives me joy to present this to Colleen Williams.
First, we have Mr. Rosendahl, Ms. Hahn.
Brief comment, having had the pleasure of doing some journalistic expression myself for 16 years on the tube, I can tell you how powerful television is in impacting people. Eighty percent of people's information comes from television. And they flip around the dials, and when Paul Moyer shows up, you know, I know a lot of them look, as well as when you show up, they do. Paul, I want to thank you for your investigative pieces over the years, which have been dramatic and impactful. But thank you, NBC. Thank you, the on-camera faces who make a huge difference to us all in educating us and connecting us to the issues of the day. Bless you and congratulations. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn. Hold on, Colleen, hold on a second. Some of the council members first.
Oh, I just want to say Paul is back. He's out covering something, breaking news in the halls, or anything we should know about here.
Welcome back, Paul. He was here earlier, he went away, then he came back. But hold on a second for the councils, and then we'll give you the podium and the microphone. Janice.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to stand and congratulate NBC on 60 years. I know Colleen and I were talking earlier, and I do remember when the peacocks went colorful. And that was such a great moment in the history of Los Angeles. That was a long time ago. I know. You know, I just wanted to say that, you know, I think you all are the network of the people, and I think that's what's really important. It has a lot to do with our on-air personalities, certainly Paul Moyer, Colleen Williams, but you really have a way of connecting to communities locally. And you do a number of broadcasts that I think encourages people to get involved in their communities. I know you did a whole green program, which was encouraging people to participate in those kinds of green programs. So, you're a network of the people. We congratulate you on 60 great years. And thank you to both of you, particularly to Colleen, who does come here on a regular basis and advocate for us to get involved in, hopefully, ending domestic violence in our lifetime. Thank you.
Tom Labonge.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Paul and Colleen, Janice mentioned color. I remember where I saw it. I was at my Aunt Ray and Joanne Brock's house, and Paul Lathan was doing the news. And the first time they had colored TV, it was Channel 4 in Los Angeles. And I just wanted all the history that is about it, but also the history that's on the other side of the microphone. We see you on Saturdays and Sundays. We see you without the camera at community events. Fritz Coleman is an all-star. All your team that's out there, Fred Rogan in the Valley, often in some places there, and Mario Solis in his motorcycle, wherever he is, he's there. Your people are there. So, I just wanted to thank you for being part of the very important Fourth Estate. And hopefully, in the next four years, there'll be more bold letters from the Fourth Estate in such a worldwide economic crisis, but we're also having a media crisis as this dynamic is changing. But you bring the news to the people. I thank you. I thank you on behalf of all the PIOs of the city of Los Angeles who help get the word out when there's an incident, when there's a challenge, when there's a problem. And another 60 years, we miss you at Sunset and Vine when you were there so many years ago, but then you went over to Burbank. But who knows, you may get back to LA one day if you're lucky.
We're on the move.
Yeah, if we're lucky, you'll come to Universal Studios soon. The microphone is yours. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Reyes. I'm sorry, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President.
You pushed the button late.
I just want to rise and say, on behalf of the communities that reflect the great diversity, NBC's programming and your outreach to this great array of languages and cultures is truly appreciated, especially when we're dealing with issues of domestic violence and those that hit the core of this great richness we have because of our diversity. Thank you so much for that outreach and the potential that we have to continue working together within this international city. Thank you very much.
Now, we got Wendy Grill.
Sorry, I just want to briefly, we're losing my voice, I want to speak too long, but we have many of us in Los Angeles grown up watching KNBC, Channel 4, and being able to get our news about life, not Colleen, okay? Did I just say, did you say, yeah? We were, you know, same time we were born, you were young, so. But the importance of the media in Los Angeles, and particularly Channel 4, and the fact that, as Mr. Reyes mentioned, been part of the community as well. It's not just telling the news, it's also helping those neighborhoods in Los Angeles and really speak to Los Angelinos and what it means to be a part of a community. NBC4 has been part of this community, and so I'm glad that we're able to recognize you all today. And thank you for being the face of some of the stories that we love to hear and those that may make us cry, but we know it's coming from individuals and an organization that is helping us deal with whatever those issues may be. So, congratulations today. Thank you very much.
And now, we have the anchor team from the 5:00 and 11:00 p.m. broadcast, NBC4 Los Angeles. Where Paul Moyer attended Torrance High School, could have played pro baseball, but he decided to go to University of Arizona and party. And Colleen, from Winston-Salem, North Carolina, an Air Force brat, and you folks are anchoring the news together here in Los Angeles. So, we turn it over to you, Paul and Colleen. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Los Angeles City Council. 60 years, I mean, you know, we've been around longer than Labonge and Rosendahl. Well, maybe, maybe longer than one of them, but, but, you know. All right. Labonge and I go way back to, we see each other a lot at Musso Franks, which is one of the last remaining real old-time restaurants in Los Angeles, and it's always nice to see you there. But, you know, 60 years, my gosh, I mean, I feel like sometimes I've worked every one of those 60 years at Channel 4, and I'm just tickled to be here because there aren't many of me left, you know, aging male anchors in local television news. Actually, I'm tickled to be anywhere, to be honest with you. But when I think of the history of Channel 4, of KNBC, which used to be KNBH, became KNBC in 1962, two words come to mind, I'll be brief, trust and class. And to earn the trust, the relationship with Southern California, you know, it took a long time. You've got to go back to people like Jack Lathan and Chick Hearn. I know you guys remember them, Brokaw, Snyder, Gumbel from the 70s. They went on to bigger and better things. We stayed here. That's okay, because in Los Angeles, I believe every station has a brand and an identity. And I think the identity and the brand for KNBC, Channel 4, is class, from the product to the people, the people I mentioned from the 50s, the 70s, the 80s, and the people that do the news there now. I mean, I think our product speaks for itself, and when you think of the people there and the experience that goes into our broadcast, and people like, I'm very lucky to work with, Colleen Williams, Fritz Coleman, I mean, I can go on and on and on. But class is the brand for KNBC. So, happy 60th KNBC. Here's to 60 more, and I hope that we can be around for at least a few more of those years. City Council, thank you very much. Much appreciated.
And now, from Colleen, Colleen Williams.
I just want to say, we stayed here because we love LA. And I want to point out that contrary to popular opinion, we were not there when the station signed on 60 years ago. Our motto is trust experience, but truly, we don't have that kind of experience. On behalf of everyone here at NBC4, we thank you for the honor you bestow on us today. There have been a lot of changes in the past 60 years. One thing has never changed, and that is commitment at Channel 4. Commitment to getting it right, commitment to excellence, and you mentioned it, council members, commitment to the community, that is something we take very, very seriously. 60 years ago, we signed on, three hours and 40 minutes of programming. These days, three hours and 40 minutes is about what we do for breaking news, one story. And in the past 60 years, there have been a lot of big stories. As Paul mentioned, we've really covered them all. Certainly, a lot of changes, black and white, color, high-def, digital, live trucks, satellites, choppers, big hair, big names, white streaks, and leisure suits. Okay, so everything wasn't all that good. On Friday night, we invite you to join us as we look at 60 years in television in Los Angeles. In fact, I might point out, we may see a few of your faces there. I mean that in a good way. Really, I do. We thank you for the recognition. We invite you to join us on Friday night at 7:00 p.m. Thank you. We love LA.
Thank you. We love NBC4 Los Angeles. Thank you. Paul and Colleen, thank you. And number 18, we have Matt Dowd, public comment on this matter.
Hate to wreck the celebration, but, Matt Dowd, just want to comment on a couple of things with this item. First of all, today is January 14, and the KNBC4 day is Friday, the 16th, so it just looks like you're squeezing in another presentation on the public. Why isn't this one on Friday, on the actual day? Now, ABC is better, but I can, now I understand why they talk about class. That's why they don't have Zooma Dog on that network, obviously, but they're putting them on ABC tonight at 11:35. You can, but I don't want to take anything away, though, from the great work that this channel has done in the city of Los Angeles. And so, let me give them my congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll go to the Valley, Marlene Goodman. Marlene Goodman.
Good morning, and thanks for hearing us here in the Valley. I'm here today because there's a lot of information, misinformation being disseminated by zoo employees and the zoo administration. It's on TV and it's in the newspapers, and I'm kind of here to set the record straight. When Billy goes up to Paws, he will have a 20-acre grassy area to walk and run on.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Apparently, she believes this is for public comment. The council still has to vote on item 19.
All right, on number 18. Open the roll, number 18. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, that matter passes. Let's go to the Valley again to public comment, which we're now going to be in public comment. Ma'am, you can go ahead.
Okay, I was discussing the fact about misinformation being disseminated by the zoo and its administration. And I said, when Billy goes up to Paws, he'll have 20, I want the city council to know this, he'll have 20 acres of grassy area to walk and run on, and at the zoo, he'll have about 3/4 of an acre of sand. At Paws, he will be with another Asian elephant, a male bull, Nicholas. They will not be castrated, as Paws does not do that. Castration is a rumor started by zoo employees. It will not happen at Paws. The zoo administration's, its elephant keepers, and the zoo commission have all visited Paws Sanctuary and gave it glowing reports. These reports were read into the zoo commission records, so it's on file for you to see. It is obvious, if Billy goes out to live the balance of his life as nature intended, he will be sent to Paws. Today, I heard that knowledge is power, and since the experts have brilliantly shared their knowledge with everybody and Channel 4, they've spoken in favor of Billy going to Paws Sanctuary. The city council has an opportunity to do the right thing. They have to do this for a humane reason. Take Billy and send him to the sanctuary at Paws. It's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is also in Van Nuys, Malaghi Ramji. Good morning, Ms. Ramji.
Hi, good morning. I also wish to address some of the misconceptions in the article on Billy in the Los Angeles Times, which quoted 80 or more zookeepers. First, the issue of space. The planned 3.6-acre exhibit with its, and I quote, "planned waterfalls, watering holes, mud wallows, and logs," end quote, sounds like a great PR dream for humans. This will be divided into four or more yards, with each yard having about the same or less space as Billy has now. With their huge size and long strides, how are elephants supposed to walk or run amidst all this clutter? Is this designed for the elephants or merely to look good on paper? Second, the issue of breeding. In the prestigious peer-reviewed journal Science, animal welfare scientist Georgia Mason of the University of Guelph in Ontario says that, and I quote, "Once you lock up the giant space-loving beasts, their health suffers, their median lifespan plummets, and they quit breeding. The last things you would want for a creature you're ostensibly trying to help survive." End quote. The only way to breed Billy would be through artificial insemination, traumatic for the animals, expensive for the zoos, and with very poor results. In the last 10 years of 25 babies born in AZA-accredited zoos, only six survive. The article in the journal Science goes on to say, and I quote again, "The rate of infant mortality in Asian calves was also two to three times higher for those born in zoos, raising concerns that the stress of being bred in captivity takes a toll on babies and mothers. The stress of being born in a zoo is suspected to predispose them to early death. While being transferred from one zoo to another is thought to produce lethal stressors in elephants, they tend to be moved every seven years for breeding." End quote. It is time to do what is right for Billy, not for humans. Let him go to the sanctuary and truly live like an elephant.
Thank you. If we could reconsider 18, there was one card, I think, that Suzanne didn't call on. If we can open the roll on reconsideration of 18, close the roll and tabulate the vote. And we have two, sorry.
Fourteen ayes.
Michael Carrion, if you'd like to come forward on 18, then we'll come back to general public comment in just a moment, and then Rick Nightingale will follow in general public comment. Karen Bonadilla will follow that. Michael Carrion.
Yes, my name is Michael Carrion, and I also like to thank Channel 4 on their 60 years. They make commitment to the public. If maybe they make a commitment to the public, they can come and have a survey on the parking enforcement or lack of parking enforcement. We can have something going on so they can document the lack of parking enforcement. I will do what I have to to get that in, and if Channel 4 reports it, maybe every councilman's district here will pay attention, because apparently, when the people come here, the people that are in charge of the parking don't pay attention. It goes in one ear and out the other. They're like donkeys with their blinders on. They don't see nothing, they don't hear nothing.
Mr. President, he does not appear to be talking on this topic. Thank you. If you could keep it on the Declaration of the Day.
And if they would make this kind of report, then it would be great.
Thank you, sir.
They're the ones that had a commitment to the public. I thought I was the public.
Thank you, sir. Yes, if you could talk about the Declaration of that Day. Absolutely.
The Declaration, 60 years of commitment to the public. So, maybe if they can talk to the public a little bit more, not just make commitments, then we can get a little bit more done around this horseshoe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrion. Rick Nightingale out in the San Fernando Valley on item 18. Then we'll return to Karen Bonadilla here for general public comment, followed by Chuck Tenen. Mr. Nightingale.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale. I do watch Channel 4. I do watch their station for the news, and I enjoy it. I do watch O'Reilly, too, and they really condemn Channel 4 for a lot of it, but I do watch the news on Channel 4 at their hour on both times at 6:00 and 11:00, in 5:00 and 11:00, I'm sorry. And, but, I wish that you would give the presentations after public comment. The reason, because we're out here playing on a meter, and we're held over. I think public comment should be held right after the roll call, so you would let some of us people that do have to pay on the meter situation go home. But like I said, I, I'm glad 60, Channel 4 had 60 years, and I hate to say it, I remember when they came on the air. I was one of the very few, our family was a few people that had TVs then, and we enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nightingale. If we can open the roll on 18 again and close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you for your patience. You're next. And then Chuck Tenen, follow that.
Thank you again, council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of all of you. I was here yesterday, but I ran out of time, and I just, I am passionate about closing the elephant exhibit and sending Billy to Paws. I have been there. I have seen the brand-new bull-elephant habitat, which is the first ever of its kind in the United States. It's incredible. I know Councilman Cardenas has seen it as well. State-of-the-art. Nicholas, 15-year-old Nicholas is very happy there, and he would welcome Billy in a heartbeat. I wanted to reiterate what another person has said, because I planned on saying this yesterday, and I really want to say it. So, again, regarding the recent study, December 11th, which was one week after you all met talking about the elephant exhibit, this is a new study, and I propose to all of you council members, this is not going to be the last. In a survey of 4,500 captive elephants worldwide, a team of researchers from the UK, Canada, and Kenya found that once you lock up the giant space-loving beasts, their health suffers, their median lifespan plummets, and they quit breeding. The last things you would want for a creature you're ostensibly trying to help survive. Whether or not it's valid to say zoos keep species... Whether or not it's valid to say zoos keep species alive or not, says animal welfare scientist Georgia Mason of the University of Guelph in Ontario. Many species do well, but the elephants do not. Please, don't ignore this scientific information. It is pertinent to your decision. Please, I just beg of you, I pray to God that you do consider this. And to Councilman Cardenas, I think you're the best, from my father, retired Colonel Robert A. Bonadilla, United States Marine Corps, he salutes you. You're an American patriot. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bonadilla. As Mr. Tenen comes up, if we can take up seven, now that we have 12 members, the ordinance that we held on the desk, and please prepare the roll on seven and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Tenen.
President Garcetti, City Council members Chuck Tenen, we need a change in the housing policy. The city's housing problem is growing worse because the city does not offer developers and communities incentives. This is the reason why we have this problem. The lack of available housing and the loss of more existing affordable housing is getting worse. The housing problem in the city will not cease if we don't fix the problem that caused the problem. No developer-community incentives. This city needs a housing policy that is long overdue. When this city realizes that we desperately need more housing, affordable housing, and we need a housing policy, then we can fix it. The Central City Association quoted recently, "We should build where we want people to live, where they could use public transportation to get there where they want to." Jan Perry cries, "We need more housing." What we really need is a good housing policy for more housing. People should live where they want to live and not where the city wants them to live. If the city leaders think this is the right way, go back to school and get an education in solving housing policies. This does nothing to help the poor, middle-class, bottom-end seniors, disabled, and families with kids who can't afford to live in LA. And regarding the March city elections, people should not be bullied by fear. Vote for change. Vote for the candidates that support the people. Renew the core of social values. Fight for the little guy. Noel Weiss is a man for a city attorney. He'll work hard to bring about positive changes for the people. And Bill Rosendahl must be listening. A hundred citations were given out in public parking lot, Dock 52 in Marina Del Rey, for parking over the line and taking up two parking spots. Someone listened to my idea in enforcing it. One area in one week, five grand. And also in Ed Reyes', parking meters in East LA, four bucks an hour. On a recent survey, we use less. Instead of more city revenue, less revenue. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your activism. Gary Slossberg is our next speaker. After that is Oscar Johnson. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning. Hi, my name is Gary Slossberg. I'm running for city council for the 13th district. I come here today to speak about the importance of public debates in our local city council elections. Last week, I sent a proposal to my opponent to participate in public debates in our council district to inform the voters on the issues of importance. So far, I've yet to receive a response. As it stands now, as I know you're all aware, if a candidate cannot raise substantial funds for their campaign, they have an incredibly difficult time competing for the attention of voters. This is without regard for the quality of their ideas, and further, without regard for the dedication and work ethic that candidate might bring to the office. I find it quite appropriate to raise this issue the same week that candidate fundraising reports are due. What should come as little surprise is that the funds raised by incumbents, in most, if not all cases, dwarf in comparison the amount raised by their challengers. Unsurprisingly, so often, the donors to incumbents are the same vested interests with which a government by the people and for the people should try to protect us from, as is the case here with contributions from rich developers and billboard companies. What is abundantly clear to me is that our city desperately needs campaign finance reform to remove the influence of money out of our government. Second, what is clear to me is the need to mandate that candidates participate in open public debates. A refusal to debate is an effort to silence opposition and delegitimize one's opponent, and is a sad statement on city government, if to be a legitimate candidate, one must be personally wealthy or have a famous last name. More importantly, given the gravity of the issues we face in our nation and in our city, it's an offense to the voters to play political games rather than have an open debate between the candidates on how to get us through these tough times. I'm a former teacher, a violence prevention educator, a longtime neighborhood council member, and currently an attorney for low-income teen parents. Am I still not a legitimate candidate for office because I'm not rich? Is this the type of government that our city deserves? I think we can all agree that it does not. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Slossberg. Our next speaker is Oscar Johnson. After that, we'll go out to the Valley again, and Rick Nightingale will be next.
Good morning. I'm a community activist. First of all, I'd like to give my condolences to the people of Palestine and Gaza for the terror that Israel continued putting on them. We hope that US and Israel war machine will leave the Middle East and leave the peoples in peace. But anyway, I was reading about our democracy in America, though, as our independent party, Mr. Ralph Nader, he didn't have the money to speak, so we didn't hear what he had to say about our economy and our Wall Street and the corporate America. Because I read where our independence is not associated with other large entity. Independent subsidies are dependent upon entity of something else, what we see our Democrat and Republican Party have been involved in. We live in a government in America, but we're not governed by our American government. The American government is constitution government. It's not about Republican Party, Democratic Party, it's about the constitution government. But anyway, the Republican Party and Democrat Party is not American Party, they're un-American Party. They seem to bring in communism and socialist government instead of government for the people. We should go find a way to go back to independent party, give the people respect back, give the people dignity back, and give the people responsibility. We need more jobs, we need job training. Seems as though our political party only give us hypocrisy, deceit, and more broken promises. Our mayor, Los Angeles, said he want to put a million-dollar, $100 million youth project in Watts for job training for the youngster, for the young America, but there's a broken promise that never come true. Seems as though we say things and we don't mean what we say, we don't say what we mean in a lot of terms, because we have no one to really force us to do things, and our politics should be more accountable for what they're doing to us as Afro-American minorities, with our policemen shooting innocent peoples as well and not being accountable for it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rick Nightingale out in the San Fernando Valley, and then Arnold Sacks will follow, here back in council chambers.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale. Yeah, I hear today all this about public housing and so forth and so on. I believe in that to a certain point, but I mean, my father turned around back when I was born in the 40s, and even Los Angeles, you couldn't even get a place just about for a reasonable price. So they bought a house in North Hollywood. Okay? So we lived there for quite a few years, and it wasn't big enough for our family, so around North Hollywood, it still wasn't kind of big, he wanted a little bit bigger for our family, so he went and built a house in Sun Valley. I mean, this is going way back. We moved in at 1951. It just kept moving out. Back in the San Fernando Valley, when Los Angeles and Santa Monica were so packed, you couldn't build anymore. It was already full for single-family dwelling, as you want to call it. And then we turn around in the San Fernando Valley, used to have all these ranches and orange groves and everything, and now look what the San Fernando Valley look from back in the 70s. And it is packed. There is no room for a single-family dwelling. You... After a while, you have so many people here, I'm sorry, there's no more room. You're going to pile them on top of each other, and the downfall of the valley was the apartment buildings. This is why you have all the crime and so forth, because there is no parks or nothing else. Like when they built Santa Clarita, you had to have so many parks, so many police stations, so many fire stations and so forth, and the public does not have that now. This is where most of the thing happens. And what are you going to... You can't do anything about that. But you keep saying that you want public housing and so forth, and it's not going to happen. And you're going to have... You might as well come to that conclusion. And the city laws say you can't afford to keep paying for all this stuff that you think you want. You're going to have to cut the budget. You are not facing reality of there is no money for all of this stuff that you people want to do. There isn't. And you're going bankrupt. It's already on the paperwork. Thank you.
Thank you. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker, here in council chambers, and Michael Carrion.
Good morning, City Council, Arnold Sacks. Several months ago, the city entered into an agreement with LA Land Arena Land Company for signage at Staples Centers, and I spoke out about how the city was being taken for that. They were going to get $2 million plus a percentage. And I just wanted to note that there's been a couple of articles recently in newspapers. In this article, a businessman in Hawthorne is suing because his billboard, the city is not allowing him to erect a billboard in El Segundo. And relative, the size of it is relatively equal to the size of a digital billboard, but his claim is that it would generate $14,000 a month in revenue, and over a year's time, that's $168,000. And LA Live is going to have 14 of those billboards, but I don't think they're going to generate $14,000 each per month. They're probably going to generate twice that amount based on the amount of traffic that goes by LA Arena, the Staples Center. Also, so look at what the city's going to get, $2 million for the 14 billboards, plus the digital billboards that are going to go up at Staples Center. Also, AEG just signed a contract with Panasonic, and they're going to put up a 8,000-square-foot billboard. But guess what? The city doesn't get any of that funding, because the city's contract is with the LA Land Arena Company, which is a subsidiary of AEG. How cool is that? The city is going down the tubes and selling off its assets left and right to any major contributor that they can find. When I hear, and I bring up before here again, the discussions regarding cable television, some fight done by the city, there goes the Titanic.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Michael Carrion is our next speaker, and then Matt Dowd.
Yes, my name is Michael Carrion. And this morning, on the way to city council, I counted 73 vehicles parked illegally on three blocks, Judge Aliso, Los Angeles, and Main Street. And you sit here and say you don't know what I'm talking about. No one will get up off their butts to walk outside to see 73 vehicles parked illegally. I've counted them. Yesterday, there were 69 after I left this office. If anybody wants, I have proof of it on film. Anyone right outside. I called... I also went to Hollenback Police Department, where they're having old parking problems. There were 48 vehicles parked in the red, blocking the fire hydrants. There was even a black and white vehicle in the handicap zone. So my question was, was the officer physically handicapped or mentally handicapped that he couldn't read the sign? Or did he just feel he was above the law? Okay? But when I called parking enforcement, they wouldn't go out there to cite them. I asked the captain Blake Chow why these atrocities keep happening in Hollenback Police Department. He said, quote, "We do not have parking, and we will continue this." There are vehicles parked in the middle of the street. That's how bad the parking is. And if anybody on the Transportation Department has any questions, call me, ask me. I have it documented. I have license numbers, I have vehicle numbers, and I have photos. So I do not come here just out of the blues with numbers. I document it. I had 40 detectives asking me what was I doing? What was I doing? I am taking pictures of these vehicles that are parked illegally. If you don't like the law, change it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Matt Dowd. And that is our last speaker for public comment.
Yeah, thank you. I emptied my bank account on the way here this morning. I took it all out in quarters so I could get some parking for an hour outside City Hall. You know, a quarter gets you five minutes outside in downtown Los Angeles. It's ridiculous. Like Proposition B coming up, the solar energy boondoggle, it's B for boondoggle. And the only reason it looks attractive is because you've taken $2 billion, I think, from the federal government to help fund it, but it's just robbing Peter to pay Paul. It's basically robbing Barack to give to Antonio and all his campaign contributors as a reward for keeping him in office. So vote no on Measure B. It's not... You know, let me put it to the public this way. It's like buying a $3 billion IBM computer, and you know what? Next year, it's going to be obsolete, so don't buy it. Now, let me talk about public comment. Because I noticed some, you know, councilmen got up yesterday because they didn't like what someone says. Not about like. You know, I've got all your... The language from your own city attorney, and you know what they said? They said to you that as long as public comments implemented fairly without consideration of the content of the speaker's comments... And then your city attorney here says, oh, this is a limited public forum, but your city attorney quotes the city of Norwalk, where it says, "So they may fit into the non-public forum." It says that those... The limitations on speech at those meetings must be reasonable and viewpoint-neutral, but that's all they need to be, and that those rules of decorum have not fared well in litigation.
Thank you. That will close our general public comment for today. If we can please take up the next item called Special.
Next item is item number 12, called Special for Cards, and there is a substitute motion on 12A that has been distributed.
Okay, we'll accept that, and we'll take public comment now on item 12. Arnold Sacks is our first speaker, and then Michael Carrion.
Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. The hypocritical commentary here. Just curious to know about the race that's listed, item E, is not a marathon race that's going to be held, is not going to be run on the weekend, I hope, because you know there's a law that states you can't run a marathon on Monday, on any weekend days, they have to be run on Mondays. Another sellout by the city, what the public didn't find out about. I'd just like to know that it's not a marathon, it's not a 26-mile race, even though it's called something different. We know how those things work. Just to clarify for the public how well the city protects its image.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Michael Carrion is next, and then Matt Dowd.
My name is Michael Carrion. We got special events that continue to come through this city council. This is the first time, I think, I've ever seen one where it says everybody's going to pay back. My question is, what do they pay back? What percentage do they pay back? Whenever you have these special events and there's millions of dollars given out, you also have your parking enforcement that's out there, and you're towing vehicles away, and you're doing all this stuff. For who? The greater of a few people? I look at the money that's put out here. We sit in a budget crisis. We sit down, and we're already cutting the budget, slicing and dicing it, but yet, we continue to give money away on a daily basis like if it's growing on trees. We all know that the trees in the city of Valley are overgrown, but ladies and gentlemen, these are not money trees. These are trees that are costing us money. They're breaking the sidewalks and everything, but yet you continue to throw money away on special events. Send that money to special aid. They need it more than the special events do. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Matt Dowd on item number 12.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I noticed Zuma Dog, he's been quoted in the LA Times today, because he spoke out about special event fee waivers and how the Grammys get $125,000, but I noticed the Golden Globes are going to pay their money back. So go to zumatimes.com or LADailyblog, and you can link to the LA Times, because they're starting to clue onto these. That's why today, they're all paying them back, because they know we're watching now. So Zuma's going to be on ABC Nightline at 11:35 tonight. I saw the interview, that's what he talks about, the special event fee waivers. You can see him without the hat and sunglasses, the real Zuma Dog, ABC Nightline tonight, talking about these special event fee waivers, and now it's just fascinating today. Since we brought the ABC Nightline crew in here, everyone's on their best behavior. Even Tom LePonge got my Councilman of the Week award because he was speaking out against the parking restrictions that were coming in, and I'd hate to say it was... And I'd hate to say it was just for the cameras, but I don't want to offend anybody. I want to...
He does not appear to be speaking on this issue. Okay. Thank you. Let me close our public comment if we can't stick to the subject here. Okay?
Thank you. Yeah, okay. Let me look at a couple of these. It's great, the Fox, I'm going to give him a plug now, Mr. Garcetti, and I saw Junior Garcetti in here running in your district, too. That looks fascinating. The attorney's asleep. That was way off the topic, bro.
He's already been warned, he should be... He is done, don't worry. All right, that is the end of public comment on that one. Have a nice day, Mr. Dowd, and we will, that will open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next, order of business, please. Oh, actually, I think we have a special two reconsideration. If we can please open the roll on yesterday's special two.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, just for the record, the council file number on that item is zero eight three one five one sub one.
Okay, please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that is back before us, and we have an amending motion that's been circulated. Anybody wish to be heard on it? If not, go ahead. Do you want to be heard, Mr. Alcon, or you want to just vote on it?
Reconsideration.
We just reconsidered, it's before us. So we have the substitute motion already circulated.
He doesn't have to make the final...
It's been accepted, so...
Language to ensure that we remove the debris properly.
Okay, thank you. Let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. We'll send that forthwith. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember, we are request to be excused March tenth and eleventh for city business. That meets council policy.
Okay. Those excuses are granted.
And councilmember, we are also request to be excused Friday, January 30th. A motion is required, and that leaves 11.
Okay, I'll go ahead and move that. Ms. Hahn, second, or Ms. Perry, excuse me, second, and without objection, I'll be approved.
Councilmember Smith requests to be excused Tuesday, January 27th, to arrive at 11:15. That meets council policy.
Okay, he's excused.
And councilmember Rice requests to be excused January 28th. And these are all for personal business. January 28th, February 3rd to arrive at 10:30, and March 3rd and 4th. And those all meet council policy.
Okay, he's excused.
And that clears the desk.
Any announcements, colleagues? Not? Do we have any adjourning motions today? Okay, if I can ask everybody, please to rise in council chambers to, for our adjourning Colleagues, I was just informed of the news, and I regret to inform you, but I request we adjourn in memory of Ricardo Montalban, who just passed away this morning at his Doheny's estate home, Doheny State's home. He was eighty-eight years old. As you know, there's a theater in my district that bears his name, and it used to be the Doolittle Theater. We spent time together just as he dedicated that theater and was an incredible hero to many communities. Mr. Montalban came to the United States from Mexico City, where he was born when he was sixteen years old, was a great success as an actor, first in Spanish language in Mexico, but more than sixty, sorry, eighty movies and television shows, perhaps most famously in his roles on Fantasy Island and Star Trek. He's an Emmy Award winner, Screen Actors Guild Lifetime Achievement Award recipient, who continued to act even after a spinal injury left him wheelchair-bound. The thousand-seat Ricardo Montalban Theater in Council District 13 is where the next generation of performers participate in plays, musicals, concerts, and stand-up comedy, and it's a fitting tribute to the son of a store manager who made his dreams come true in Hollywood. He was married to actress Georgiana Young, who passed away in 2007. They had four children. He survived by them. His daughter Anita, son-in-law Gil, granddaughter Lydia were at his side when he died. May Ricardo Montalban rest in peace. Mr. Reyes, you had one of them?
Thank you, Council President. With a heavy heart, colleagues, I adjourn in memory of Roberto Lopez, a four-year-old who was unfortunately shot and killed yesterday afternoon. Around 5:30, I'm in my office, I get the call that this heinous crime had occurred. I just want to say to you that this is the type of experience that brings community together. It's the kind of experience where we need to show support for our Los Angeles Police Department. But it's also unfortunate it happens two blocks away from a brand-new school, a brand-new park. It just reaffirms the fact that we need to work harder in making our streets safer. The four-year-old was walking with his sister to community center. It was a stray bullet from a stationary position from a nearby apartment. We don't have any more details to the incident, but I'd like to stand ready, when the detectives and the police department ask us for a reward, that we stand together, and we show the community that we are in support, and we are doing everything in our power to change this environment. So I adjourn in the memory of a four-year-old, Roberto Lopez.
All members on it. Mr. Parks.
President, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Eric Scoggins, a former USC linebacker, died at the young age of forty-nine. He played outside linebacker for the USC and was very memorable in 1978 on the game with Alabama, where he was declared the Pac-10 Defensive Player of the Week for eleven tackles during that game. His pro-career span playing for 49ers, also played the United States Football League with the Los Angeles Express and the Houston Gamblers. He's a four-year letterman at USC from seventy-seven to eighty. Recorded 164 tackles, including the eleven as a sophomore in the 24-14 win of Alabama. He was born January 23rd, 1959, in Inglewood. He was a star quarterback for Inglewood High School. And basically, upon retiring, he moved to Tracy, California, and became business partners with his former 49er teammates Ronnie Lott and Kena Turner. He was recently, 2007, diagnosed with the Lou Gehrig's disease and passed away recently. Many of us may remember, we, as a council, honored him with a resolution recently where they retired his jersey at Inglewood High School. And he's a long list of talented football players who came out of the Baldwin Hills youth football, along with Wendell Tyler, James Lofton, and Warren Moon, to mention a few. I had an opportunity to coach both he and his brother while I coached at Baldwin Hills. So we ask all members on this.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Zahn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Scott David LaChasse, passed away January 10th. Scott never woke up from his sleep on Saturday morning. Attempts to revive him by his dad and EMTs were unsuccessful. This tragic ending was totally out of the blue. Scott was 27 years of age, greatly missed by his family and friends, the son of retired Los Angeles Police Department Deputy Chief Scotland and Karen LaChasse. May he rest in peace, Scott David LaChasse.
Thank you. Put all members on that, absolutely. Any other adjourning motions? Not, Madam Clerk, we please call the roll. It will next be in session on Friday, the 16th of January, here in...